We're gonna do this, we're gonna get it done, because this is what it's all about. Um, this is about time management, this is about putting your head down and just going like, if I'm such a squirreler, if the wind blows, I'm like, what did you say? And then I've lost twenty minutes. I'm, I think that's why I'm a hairdresser. So, um, I don't know if any of you guys watched or attended the Diesel Nation call last night, but if you did not, um, go watch it and watch it multiple times. I watched it live, which is always a better option. Live is always a better option. But then I watched it on the way to work and it fueled me up again. But when I watched it last night live and then we hung up, I immediately just put my head down and was like, you know what? I can't, I can't be winging this anymore, even though winging has worked. Not saying winging is wrong. Sometimes my greatest posts are from winging. But you kind of wanna start to move into a strategic business category column, okay? So, on the fly might work, but you can still use that with a theme. Does that make sense? So, we really wanna make sure, because here's the thing, Becky asked, and it got me kinda sad. So, we have a small group tonight, so we can go around really quickly. If Beachbody were to shut down today, no Carl Decker, no Shakeology, no challenge groups, no Messenger, no friendships, no 5:00 AM Zoom crew, no nothing, what would you miss most about it? And who wants to start? Like, I genuinely started to cry, because I was like, what am I gonna do with my time? Like, I was like, oh my God, I've become such a better person because of this. And it really got me like, I didn't like that feeling at all. So, if Beachbody were gone tomorrow, and it was all gone, all of this, our friendships were gone, everything was gone, what would you miss most about it? I know Christina's gonna go first. I feel the fire in her.
I was gonna say, I would miss the friendships and the community and the support you get when you're having a rough day, or you're like, I didn't wanna do this, or I didn't wanna do that, or even whenever they support you in the wins. And that's important to have people, you know, cheer you on, even though they've never met you. Um, but you're all fighting the same fight, and you're all doing the same thing. So, I, that would be my main thing I would miss, I think.
Me too. What else would you guys miss if Beachbody were gone tomorrow?
Someone tell me today, she finds another coach with her neighbor, which is okay. But she said she watches me every single day because I motivate her. It just means so much that even though it's like, she's not my people, but, you know, I'm impacting other people.
Yeah. I know. That would make me super sad, too. And I love, um, I love my Facebook stories and my Instagram stories. It's like, I love tagging people. But you know what? If, if I can just mention one thing, I would miss the platform that gave me myself back to life. Like, I used to go to therapy for thirteen years after my dad took his life. And granted, it was an okay place, but I never really fully opened up, because I think it was more of a one-on-one, and I felt very like, I had to answer. And not that that's bad or good, because sometimes you need that, but I almost just took everything that I, I learned in a one-on-one setting and placed it into Beachbody, and I really actually started to do it, rather than just say, I go to therapy on Thursdays at 2:30, and then hold my breath till the next Thursday at 2:30, or whatever it was. You know what I mean? Like, I never really applied, which gave her, hmm, like, a payment every week. You know what I mean? So, I, what I love about us is that we encourage people, but we also don't hold people back. And I think therapy was actually holding me back. It gave me tools, but then I had to move into a new category to actually use it and apply it. And if this was gone tomorrow, um, I'd be pissed. I, I, I would be genuinely mad. And, because I love who I am today, and I love the friendships, because I genuinely feel better friendships here than I do at my own job. Like, I'm so much more connected to you, and if I ran into you, or if I flew in off the street to go see you, I would feel like we were the best of buds because of what we've done in this community. And I don't think many people can say that. I don't think many people can say that, like, that's my best friend, 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 oh, I don't really know her, but I love her, you know? And like, you genuinely do. So, I think that would be really heartbroken. It would, it's like a part of my, this is like, like a part of my family, you know? So, we're just going around the room real quickly. We're asking, if Beachbody were gone tomorrow, what would you miss the most? So, if anybody wants to go, we're just gonna open up real quickly, and then we're gonna get our heads down. We're gonna get to work.
I would have to agree with everybody so far, of what all of y'all have said. Plus, I would be super sad to not be able to have something that actually works. Like, this is the first program I've ever tried that I actually enjoy, and I'm losing weight, and I'm having more energy and feeling better, and I'm able to play with my son more, and do more things, and be a better wife. And this is like, the best thing ever for me, and I would cry if
Yeah.
we ever lost it.
I love that. I love that, because you have value in it. You have an investment.
Yes.
To you, you know? And you don't put a price tag on that. And so, we should hold all these things tonight before we go to bed and be like, God, if this was gone, and feel that feeling, because when you connect that feeling, even though it might not be a nice feeling, it puts more value into what you do. And then you transfer that into epic movement. You know what I mean? And I think that's valid. So, if anybody else wants to go real quick, please. Melinda.
I love the community that we have. I mean, I teach all day, and so I have twenty-seven little people, but to have these connections with all of you every single day as we check in with each other is absolutely priceless.
Yes. Amen. Absolutely. And I don't know about you, but I have a job too outside of here. And I don't even, it's funny to me that I literally run home to bust a move and be like, okay, dinner's done, I'm gonna go work my business, when normally I would be like, I'm going to bed. I'm genuinely excited to check off my tracker and provide income for my family, reach out to you guys. Like, I love who I am, because I died thirteen years ago. I, I literally died when my dad died. The lights went out, and I had to get my bananas back. And there was a fight. And I'll tell you what, I don't believe in Plan Bs. I believe in Plan As, and I believe that you better lock your butt into a Plan A and never look back, because life is too short. I love that. I love that. Melinda, what's up, ma?
Hi. It's my first time, so I was like, how do I work this?
You did it.
But, um, I wanted to say that it took me forever to even get started into the program and to get, just jump in. And I wanted to use every excuse in the book. And you know what? Ah, I even wanna cry, because this has held me out so much, not only physically, mentally. I have sisters that, obviously, we don't know each other, but we're so close in the group. And I don't know, I couldn't do it without the group.
Yep.
Amazing.
This is the power. This is the power of, do you guys realize that the power of coaching, and we need to word this, you guys, the power of coaching is from your day one photo. Day one photo. My day one photo looks like a mugshot. I am, and it looks like a mugshot. If you go into my album and look at my first photo, first of all, I'm in a thong. Who takes a picture in a thong and posts it on Facebook?
Not me.
I did it. And you know what? I don't even care anymore. I was like, you know what, though? What I pay attention most is not the physical. I pay attention to the person's eyes and their transformation. If you look at those eyes, they change. They change, and that means you are filling your soul. All right, guys, let's get to work real quickly. Let's bust a move. So, here's what it is. I'm gonna share with you what I'm gonna try. This is an experiment. So, you can take this calendar. If you wanna put it in pencil, put it in pencil. If you wanna ink it, ink it. But if you even wanna take this and then maybe refine it before September first, that's totally up to you. But use this, okay? Because I'm gonna try it out, and I wanna see how it flows, because this is about a curiosity business. So, have fun with it. Stop worrying about stress. Like, just have fun. Like, okay, I'm gonna try this, and I'll tell you what, don't you dare define your business by however many likes you get on a post, because that does not count of how many people see your stuff, okay? So, don't go, oh, I only had three people like my post. Be big deal, okay? Four thousand people might have viewed that thing, okay? And their unspoken eyes, they're watching you. So, what does that mean? You dig deep into your purpose of why this is important to you, all of it. And you're not perfect. Be imperfectly perfect, okay? All right. So, we're gonna go through one through thirty, all right? So, if you want to, what I did right here was, if you can see this, I did like a little, like a bubble here for the first two weeks, and I just wrote challenger. And then the bottom two weeks of the month, I wrote coach. So, what that means is, the first two weeks of the month, I am focusing on the aspect of a challenger and a challenge group, okay? Because you want, and, and again, you might make this your own later and tweak it, but at least you have a starting block, okay? And then the second two weeks of the month, the last two weeks of the month, you're gonna flip your gear, and you're gonna start to talk about coaching and how it's serving you, not somebody else. Now, here's the deal about this. You have to talk from where you stand today. You might be chapter one, I might be chapter thirty. Talk from where you are, because that's gonna be a post that goes, me too. So, up in the top, just make a little mark up here. Just go, my posts need to make me say, me too. That's all it has to say, me too, okay? Because when you do that, you've connected with somebody, right? So, go back and slow down and reread it, okay? Just reread it. Or if you want, if you have like somebody here, or you wanna do it wherever, I'm game for it, or a loved one at home, be like, babe, read this, but don't give it to your husband if they don't understand about women issues, because they're gonna be like, uh, I don't get it. And you'll be like, crap, it's a flop. You're like, wrong, he has a penis, I shouldn't have showed him. Like, you know what I mean? So, like, don't do that, right? So, show the person that you know will get it, which is probably a female, which is your target market, okay? All right. So, with that said, I'm gonna challenge you guys, too, and I'm gonna challenge myself, because you can go ahead and do this right now. On all your Wednesdays, you're gonna go live once on your Facebook page. All right?
Yep.
I know, it's scary, but guess what? We're doing it, because here's, here's, let me share, let me tell with you why, okay? Why? Because people can hear you, people can get more connected to you. Remember, this is a relatability, emotional, connected relationship. You want to feel safe. Here's the deal. I want someone to feel safe to message me. So, a post may not seal the deal, but if they hear my sense of humor, or they hear my spirit, or they feel my energy, they might go, you know what? That other post, I thought she was a witch, but she's actually really stinking cool. I gotta go talk to her now, right? Because how many times have we judged somebody by a picture, and then we get to know them, and they're your best friend, okay? So, let's just remember these things, because we had those too, all right? So, you're gonna go live. Now, that is up to you. Discover what you wanna go live about and keep it consistent. Maybe in the first two weeks of your challenger, maybe you wanna share a recipe. This would make you go into your Fix-8 cookbook and actually make a recipe, and you could do a tutorial. Don't make your videos more than ten minutes long. People will piece out on you. So, think about what you're gonna do. Maybe you wanna give advice to moms as they're about to get into the busy school year. Maybe you wanna give a tip for wellness that's worked really well for you. So, just think about value, okay? Live equals value and heart. So, whatever that is. And if it works for you, great. And if it, it doesn't work for you, try something else and go live, okay? But I always feel like, whatever is on your heart is what you need to do. So, don't overthink, because there's no right or wrong, okay? Eh, take that away. All right. Sunday, number one. All right. A number one and number two. So, September first, September second, we're going to challenger stuff, okay? You are gonna talk to people about why you started this journey on September first and September second. So, you gotta think about, this is challenger and thought mentality, you guys, week one and week two, okay? So, why did you start? Take people back to that girl. You gotta take people back to that girl. You know who you were before day one. You know what that crappy feeling was. You know how you stalked people on social media. So, you gotta just tweak on that, and that's what you're gonna talk about. And you can say, as your starting line, I remember when. Okay? When you say, I remember when, boom, you might get their attention, okay? So, that is day one and day two, September first, September second. September third, who I was again before the journey. Maybe you were a smoker, maybe you were a drinker. Maybe you were someone who used foul language all the time, because you had a short temper. Don't be afraid to tell people who you are. Don't. Don't deny who you were, because then all you do is deny yourself. And coaches don't deny ourselves. We lean into it, and we own it, and we're darn proud of it, because we're growing human beings, okay?
Yeah.
For four, Wednesday the fourth, you should do, every beginning of the month, a welcome to my page. Some of you might be new to my page, and you need to write a bio. So, if you want, you can hang up here when we're done. You can click my cover photo, mine personally, and it's long, okay? So, this might take a little bit of time, so don't rush this. So, you don't do it on the fourth. It's not that big of a deal. But how many of you have your bio for everybody to see? Your story, like, your story, okay? If you don't, you wanna do that. And I have my story in the click of my cover photo. Now, here's the thing about a cover photo. Pay attention to this. You wanna write that in a Google Doc, and anytime you change your cover photo, that will delete. So, you have to save it, otherwise you've lost it, okay? But go in there and see mine. I'm using very descriptive words, pain points, specific. So, this one, you may not be able to do on Wednesday. You might be like a shorter version, but try to make your goal for October fourth, or whatever it is, an in-depth descriptive detail. I even had my mom tweet this. Make sure my grammar was right, make sure my wording was right, because she's really good on that. And that one took me about a month to write. So, don't rush that. But if you wanna do one for Wednesday, make it short and sweet, and give them your bullet points, okay? But try to give a long version, copy on a Google Doc, and save it, because when people are scoping you out, they might click that cover photo and go, oh my God, I had no idea she went through all of that. And you talk about how you overcome it. So, go look at mine to give you a better perspective when you have a down moment. Number five, life before BB and who you are now. Some of these are repetitive, you guys, but it does not matter. So, you're gearing these toward challenge group stuff. So, life before Beachbody and where you are right now as a challenger, not a coach, a challenger. All right. Friday, I think you guys should talk about your dense nutrition. Hide it. Don't scream Shakeology. Don't scream all of that stuff. Um, something that I've done recently that has worked mad curiosity, if you're a chocolate lover, is from actually Kelly Beaver, who's a coach on my team. She does one scoop of chocolate Shakeology, two teaspoons of peanut butter, mixes it up with water till it's a cake batter consistency, and then I put sprinkles on top of it, and I let it chill in the refrigerator. And that is how I've been having my daily dose of dense nutrition for the whole entire summer. And when people see me eating chocolate every single day with a banana and a strawberry and thoroughly enjoying it, and I'm getting in shape, how are you eating chocolate every day? Girl, what are you eating? So, think about that, and maybe try that recipe to see if you like it. But if you're not gonna do that, show nutrition. What has served you? Talk about a benefit. You might go to the back of your Shakeology bag and go, hey, does anybody know what, you know, um, macarotes? Neither did I until I tried my dense nutrition. Don't give it away. Give curiosity. Maybe your dense nutrition got rid of your type-two diabetic scare. Maybe your dense nutrition cured up your depression and your anxiety. Maybe your dense nutrition traded your smokes and coffee breaks for something healthy. Maybe you gave up drinking, whatever. Own it and be proud of it, and you set yourself free, okay? Um, okay. So, Saturday is kind of fun. Um, I call it, like, how I converted from, um, I call it, okay, I said, um, it's not, it's not, what did I say? It's not Saturday. It's not, oh gosh, what did I say? I said it in a post. It's not, um, Saturday. Shoot.
Flacker day.
Yes. It's not flacker day, it's Saturday, right? So, you could show women that maybe you're getting up early and getting it done, and your, your house is a wreck. Like, so think outside the box, or maybe you're just sitting after a sweaty selfie, after a workout with your kids, and you're still weekend grinding, because people usually slack on the weekends. And that's gonna be another curiosity thing. And, and talk about how a challenge group has served you for the weekend. Maybe, how many of us consider the weekends our days off? I worked so hard this week. This is my weekend off. And then you go and you tear up fast food, not only Friday, but Saturday and Sunday, and then you go, the diet starts on Monday.
Yeah.
Back in it, right? You can talk about that. You can talk about, the diet does not start on Monday ever again, because I'm slaying it on the weekend. Come up with funny things. Pinterest has funny catchlines. If you wanna look up for like a hook, line, and sinker in the beginning, go to Pinterest and find a quote to catch somebody's attention. Humor works on Facebook. Funny, relatable. Use it. All right. Sunday, the eighth, you're gonna handle the objection of, I have no time. However you see fit, how it fits for you, because at one point, we all said we didn't have any time. Can I just tell you I'm sweating right now in my house, because I'm so excited? I, I'm literally sweating right now, and I have a zip on my lip the size of Montana. Can you see that? Look at that. I'm just letting you know right now. Like, I'm dying, and I have a zip right now, and it's got, and I don't know why our hair is on like, killing. Okay. So, you're gonna handle the objection of no time. You can answer this, because here's the deal. As you get objections, your job is to solve it. So, don't get, don't get down on invites and go, ah, I'm not getting anybody. They said they have no time. I'm coming up with a post. I'm gonna solve the problem. Ah-ha! Like, use it. You're a businesswoman. You're growing. Be smart. It works, and they're watching. All right. Um, the other one is number nine, too busy. Think about what's happening in the month of September. After-school activities. Um, I have daycare, I have this, I have that. Oh, my daughter's starting karate, or whatever it is. You're gonna show them how you're getting it done with your too-busy of a schedule. Maybe, and give a solution. Maybe you're asking for help from your spouse. Maybe you get up earlier and join us on the 5:00 AM, no Zoom, or no snooze Zoom crew. I can never say it right without slowing down. Like, think about those things. Solve the problem. Solve the problem with how you solve it, okay? All right. Here's the next one. Number ten, um, you believe it's not working. It's my favorite one. How many people went through a journey, like, it's not working? And then you could be like, oh, wait a minute, I forgot I'm only in week one. Like, that's humor, right? So, how many women go into week one and week two, and they're like, I haven't lost anything? You could be like, I haven't lost anything. I never lost anything in my first two weeks, but I gained community and purpose. And let me tell you, that is the best victory I ever owned. So, I'm gonna keep going to get that scale victory. Holler. Like, do you see how you can use it? Like, that's that creative thinking, right? And that energy goes into a post. All right. Let's see here. Okay. Eleven. How many do we hear this one? Girl, I just need your motivation. I don't have the motivation you have. How many of us hear that? Ugh. Okay. Guess what? You're gonna say in a post, you're gonna solve that problem. I don't have motivation. I have a vision, whatever it is. I have a goal. I have girl squad that lifts me up, that makes me think, that pushes me outside my boundaries. Think about how you gain your motivation. You know how I gained my motivation? When I obtained a small obtainable goal, like, losing a pound. That gave me more motivation. You know what else gave me more motivation? Showing up to my challenge group. That gave me more motivation. So, think about those things, right? Solve the problem with what you know, with what you're going through. Number twelve, belief over mindset. You have to tell people, you have to believe in your heart and your soul that this is possible, and your mindset is everything. One of the famous lines that I love to use, you're welcome to use it, is, "The first goal I had on my wellness journey was not to lose the weight off the scale, but the weight that sat in between my ears, because that was the heaviest weight that I carried in my life. It caused me to delay. It caused me to quit after week two, and it caused me to eat my emotions. I started leaning into personal development." See, there's a solution. I'm reading a great book. Tell them what the book is. Tell them they can get it off of Amazon. You just gave value, right? Value, 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 value all day long. All right. Thirteen. Okay. Um, nobody, I don't, did anybody here go to the gym or try a gym membership, or maybe bought a gym membership and never just paid for it? So, we can all talk about that in a post, right? Guess what a gym doesn't give you? A gym never gave me a cheerleading squad, right? How, we don't, I, a gym didn't give me a Zoom crew. A gym didn't give me moral support. A gym didn't give me a kumbaya moment when I needed it, right? So, like, think about those things. Think about, like, if I stayed at the gym, number one, I probably wouldn't show up, because I had nobody holding me accountable, and I was only going on the treadmill, because that's all I knew what to do. You didn't know how to eat. You didn't know what you were doing. And all you were worried about was Cindy Lou Who with the big boobs and the nice butt, making sure she wasn't looking at you. Was gonna fly. Like, you know what I mean? So, like, we gotta think about, like, literally.
So true, though.
Let me tell you, I used to hide all the way to the right, and I was like, okay, thirty minutes and I'm done. Woo, sweat session! And I, you know, went to Taco Bell right after. It was horrible. So, like, think about those things, right? Fourteen. All right. Here, let me see here. Um, I, I never, I never gave it my all in an atmosphere other than a challenge group. I never was encouraged. I never had a coach shout me out, send me a private message. I never had a, a, a total random new friend enter our group and shout me out with mad love. Like, think about those things in your challenge group and what they're doing for you right now, right? So, you never had, and guess what? You have to pay extra for a trainer to give you the encouragement, right? This is free. Our community is free. Mention that. When someone sees the word free dude, they're like, say what, right? So, you can talk about, too, like, listen, all I had to do was hook some stuff as an item, and then I got into a group that helped me rock it, things like that, okay? So, now we have week one, week two for challenge groups. So, and however you wanna word that, and however you wanna go live, value all day long, okay? But now you have a theme that's gonna help you, okay? It's really gonna help you. Let's switch gears. We're going to week two, or week, week three, week four on coaching. Now, you're gonna flip the script. Fifteen, you're gonna talk about accountability and how coaching has given you accountability. Because here's the deal. Before you were a coach, all of us were challengers. And I can tell you right now that I stepped up my game by ten, by twenty, when I became a coach. And if I didn't get paid a dime, I'd still be a coach, because I show up harder because of that name. It's pride. It, 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 it means something to me, and I didn't have that for the longest time. It gave me worth, okay? So, accountability might be giving you that, because you became a business owner, and you helped one more, or you're encouraging a total stranger on your Facebook page. Financial. Maybe some of you don't have the financial win right now, but you can certainly talk about your dreams. Everybody here can talk about your dream and what you're going after. Everybody can talk about that. So, don't tell me you have nothing to talk about with your finances, because you do. All right? Yeah?
That's sixteen.
That's sixteen, yes. Seventeen, time freedom. Maybe you're working towards more time freedom right now. Maybe you're holding down two or three jobs, or maybe you can't make your mortgage payment right now, or maybe you want more time with your spouse. Talk about what you want. Vision and goals and dreams go huge. Talk about it. Cast it out. Don't worry about if you're not there yet. Talk about where you wanna be. Get people excited to dream again, because I'll tell you what, adults stop dreaming quick. Vision. Talk about where you wanna go in five years. Talk about where you wanna go in a year. Where do you wanna see yourself? Do you wanna see yourself twenty pounds lighter with a team of girls at the beach? Talk about that. Do you wanna be going to Summit next year? What do you want? Where's that vision going? What do you desire? And here's the best part, you get to make it more of your reality, because you're casting it out to people. So, that's eighteen. Nineteen, you're gonna talk about how being an introvert is the best reason to be a coach. And I can give an example right now. Melinda, petrified to go live. Now that the girl's going live, like, it's no big deal. So, and, and here's, here's a great catchline. When you get a bunch of introverts together, you become an extrovert to you're living your best life, okay? So, think about those things, right? You are okay to be an introvert in this business. You don't have to be whatever. An introvert is better. You know why? You're more in touch with your feelings. And you probably have more, you're probably more heightened with it, because you're sensitive. And sensitive is not a bad thing. It is a very amazing quality in a person, because I believe you're more in touch with your soul. All right. Twenty. I can't be a coach. I have no resources. You can talk about how you're not an expert. You can talk about how you don't know anything, but you can talk about your passion, and that's what's gonna serve you in this business. But you can talk about your passion. And that's what's going to serve you in this business. And you're going to learn as you go along. And you're going to ask questions and you're going to be coachable and you're going to be teachable. And you don't care because your goals are bigger than not knowing how. Because the how, you can say, I learned the how from a YouTube and a Google search bar. Okay? Seventeen. Objection. Girl, I would love to be a coach, but I already have another job. Talk about how you fit this into your life.
You mean twenty-one?
That's twenty-one. Yeah, sorry. Twenty-two, twenty-two. Um, do, handle the objection of, do I need qualifications to be a coach? The answer is no. Twenty-three. Share a coach's success story. You have one thousand people in Team Rise and Shine. I don't care if you don't have a team member underneath of your belt right now. You come over here and message one of us and say, can I shout you out today? And we will give you a bio and we will do that. So remember, you always have something. You don't have nothing. Coaching, again, you want to go back to the community. Why do you love coaching? What is it giving you? What's that energy like? Twenty-five. Now, this is, what was your first win for your paycheck? Maybe it was twenty-five dollars. Maybe it was fourteen dollars. Maybe it was thirty dollars. Maybe you haven't gotten a paycheck yet. But how excited can you be to talk about when you get that first paycheck, what you're going to do? And you don't care how small it is or how large it is? You worked to serve and help other people and keep your health and wellness intact. You can talk about that. And you can talk about, when I get that first paycheck, whatever the goal is, maybe you're saving up for Christmas. And talk about that. Or talk about getting out of debt. And you don't care if it's thirty or five hundred dollars. That's going towards freedom. Passion, man. Passion. And don't worry about the dollar sign. It's the energy you provide. Twenty-six. What's your why? Why do you want to coach? We kind of just kind of went around the room, right? If coaching left us, how would we feel, right? So why do you coach? That's something you want to dig deep with and slow down and answer five layers deeper than your surface level answer. Because again, you got to connect. You got to connect. Twenty-seven, what is a personal goal you're going after coaching right now? I would not recommend talking about, I want to go Emerald or I want to go Diamond. That's Chinese to people. They're going to be like, what's that? You can talk about how you want to earn maybe a free trip. You want to talk about how you want to go to Coach Summit and get your ticket paid for. You want to talk about, maybe you just want to knock down your credit card bill. Or you want to say yes, like Alyssa said, I want to say yes to my daughter to go to preschool. Like, I'm tired of saying no. I want to say yes to everything, right? Twenty-eight. Kids need the ultimate example of how to be an amazing light in this life. And when you change from challenger to coach, you stepped up your game. You started looking into your phony baloney. You started looking into the negative Nancy, which all of us have. And you started to own your stuff. Because do our children and our loved ones not watch us or listen to us? They actually watch us. Their behaviors, our actions, our everything. So if you have kids or you have adoptive kids or whatever it is you have, you are their role model by how you handle life's curveballs, life joys, life everything. So when you get stressed, own it. Talk about how you cried, but how you got back up. Because you have a little one watching you. Because when she gets older, you cannot have her have low self-esteem. Because this is how we break the trend. We break the trend by breaking it in ourselves and unwiring all this stuff and rewiring ourselves. And they are automatic. Yesterday, I'll give you a reason why. My son yesterday pulled out a yellow container and said, Mom, I'm going to put my Cheez-Its in the yellow container. Because I know they're a card. And I go, yes. And I didn't say anything. It was a cool moment. Because you know why? He's watching me. And I like that. Because I don't need my son to be obese. I don't need my son to have health issues. That's freaking awesome to me. Twenty-nine. Uh, let's see here, was always a challenge, okay, I remember I talked about, I was always a challenger in life. And when I became a coach, maybe you gained friendships. Maybe you gained whatever it is on your heart. Before, I was always a challenger in life. I was challenged by comparison. I was challenged by, um, people's opinions. I was challenged by a person's comment or something on the news. And I finally met myself and fell in love with myself for the first time. And I'm never letting that go. Because coach is life. All right. And anything on the 30th, anything personal, anything on your heart. You know, for me, maybe you want to talk about the, like, what your mess could be your message. You know, whatever that is on your heart. Maybe there's something very profound. Hold on one second. Maybe there's something very profound that really is like that core of why you do it. And it might be a vulnerable post, or it might be a surface level post. But what, whatever is on your heart, you share that. So that is an open day for you to talk about what it is on your heart. So I welcome you to use this. I welcome you to explore these, um, what do we call them? These themes. And I welcome you to remember challenger for week one, week two, and then coach week three, week four. And don't worry about being perfect. Just worry about the theme and connecting. And that way you're touching on all aspects. But the beautiful thing is, don't forget you're going live. Keep it less than ten minutes. Think of the value. Maybe you just want to share how you're a mom, killing it, going to work. And, and you just nailed your workouts three days in a row. And just inspire somebody like, hey, moms, listen, I'm, I'm busy as heck. I just want to pop on real quick and say, if nobody told you, you're amazing. You're amazing. You're smart. You're funny. And if anybody puts you down, I'm here to lift you up. Do you know how freaking cool that would be to go live and just say something like that? Like, nobody does that on Facebook. Be creative. Be fearless. And yet, I'll tell you what, the more you serve, the better you feel. The more you want to do. Because I can tell you right now, the energy in this group, I can feel your passion. I see you writing. I see, I see you. I see you while you're doing this. And you know what? I feed off of you. And I love feeding off of you. Because you know what? It feels freaking good. So thank you for being on this call with me. And thank you for letting me share with you what I have no clue what I'm doing, but I'm going to give it my best. And I'm not backing down on my goals. So I'm going to see how this works. And I want you to see how this works. And if we all lean in together with this energy, I guarantee you, we will be a success in the month of September. All right, guys, I love you so much. This call was recorded. Sweet dreams. If you have any questions, message me privately. I'm happy to help with anything. Don't forget to click my cover photo so you can try to get a depth descriptive bio of who you are by October, okay? I'll talk to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good night. I love you.
Good night.
Bye.